Okay, it's six o'clock and I will call this meeting to order. Rob, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Leece.
Here.
Mrs. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Bear.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. DeVoli.
Here.
Mr. Hannah.
Here.
All members of council are present. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular session of the Enen Village Council. This is Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Thanks to everyone that's here tonight. I think I know why everybody's here. We appreciate you coming out. Let's do additions to our agenda. Any additions from council? Seeing none, let's go into the minutes. This would be from Tuesday, August 12, 2025. If you've had a chance to review these minutes and are satisfied with their contents, I'd entertain a motion and a second to approve.
So moved, second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Those minutes are approved as presented. Rob, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a minute or so for finances. Anything to report? I know taxes came in. Was that earlier in the month, the second half?
The second half was last month.
Last month, okay.
They were already posted.
Gotcha.
We still have money in the bank?
We have money in the bank? Okay, that's good.
But no, nothing of note to report.
Okay, very good. So tonight, we're gonna make an appointment for a new chief of police for the village of Enen. This is gonna be a celebration, in my opinion. Before we get to that point, I would like for Mr. Hannah, who is the chair of our public safety committee, to explain the process. I did ask that committee to take charge of the posting of the job, the interview process, and then a recommendation back to me. So, Mr. Hannah, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you coming out this evening. I'll read this verbatim, so that way we've got a copy that we can put in the record of what we were looking for when it initially went into the process and how that kind of transpired over the period of time. The process to select the new village of Enen police chief began on a formal job announcement outlining the essential qualifications, duties, and expectations for the candidates. This announcement was shared through official municipal channels, professional networks, and public platforms to attract a diverse and qualified applicant pool. Once the applications were received, the public safety committee, which is Ms. Sweet, Mr. DeVoli, and myself, were also joined by West Milton Police Chief Doyle Wright, reviewed the resumes and cover letters, shortlisting candidates whose experience credentials align best with our department's vision and community needs. Those chosen applicants were then invited to participate in structured interviews. These interviews assessed each candidate's leadership styles, approach to public safety, crisis management skills, and commitment to community engagement. Following the interviews and assessments, the selection committee deliberated and recommended two candidates to the village mayor. The mayor then reviewed the applications, the letter recommendations, and/or additional documents, as well as the results from the public safety committee assessment panel and remarks. The candidate selected by the mayor has been presented to the village council, who may or may not confirm the mayor's recommendation. The presentation tonight includes the introduction of the new police chief and outlines the qualifications considered in his selection. The village of Enen affirms the department's commitment to public safety, service, and maintaining community trust. We feel that this candidate can effectively restore relationships with our citizens, our law enforcement brothers and sisters, and our fellow first responders with Enen matter of fire services. Overall, the process was designed to ensure transparency, merit-based selection, and to foster public confidence in the leadership of the village and local police force. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hannah. And let me pick up from there. And I just, I wanna reiterate a few things that he said. I did receive recommendation from two candidates. I reviewed carefully all the information that was made available to me. I met with both candidates, spoke to them at some length in regards to small-town policing. After considering everything, that's when I decided that Lieutenant Wise should be appointed as the village's next chief of police. He has earned this appointment with his hard work ethic, his knowledge, and love of the Enen community. I did have calls of support from previous employees, past supervisors. And one conversation stuck out with me. One of his former supervisors, we were talking about a lack of supervisory experience on paper, but he said, "Just because Lieutenant Wise didn't wear the stripes doesn't mean he was not a leader in Clark County." Lieutenant Wise has brought new energy, new ideas, new relationships, and some much-needed humor to the village of Enen. Jeff, you started your career at the village of Enen in 1994. Thirty-one years later, you're back. You have come full circle. Congratulations. Are you ready to do this?
Yep.
Okay.
Ready?
Ready.
Raise your right hand. Compete after me. I, Jeffrey L. Wise.
I, Jeffrey L. Wise.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
The codified ordinances.
Codified ordinances.
Of the village of Enen.
Of the village of Enen.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of chief of police.
Of chief of police.
For the village of Enen.
For the village of Enen.
Clark County, Ohio.
Clark County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Do you have any items of communication this evening?
I think we should change the name on his, in front of him, right there. It says Mr. Wise.
It should say Chief Wise.
It should say Chief Wise.
I agree with that.
There you go, Bob.
Kevin, can you take care of that, please?
I will take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other items of communication? I'll turn it over to you, Kevin, for staff reports. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, residents. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
First item, first couple items on my agenda there is just updates on our generator project at the water plant and our park toys that we have been installing. Here's a few pictures of the new generator being installed at the water plant. As of right now, the electric's hooked up. The gas just finished hooked up today. So Buckeye Power Sales will be coming back once we go through our checklist to make sure everything's hooked up, because if not, everything on that checklist is done, then they'll charge us, you know, for the trip to come back to start it up. But, so we're in the process of, you know, just tidying up some minor loose ends right now, but that'll be probably scheduled, I think he said they were two weeks out, at least two weeks out, to come back and do the startup, initial startup.
That's $84,000 hanging in the air there.
Hanging in the air, yes. Hanging in the air, yeah. So, everything went well, and we sat it into place. And the guys did a good job pouring the concrete there and for the base. And so, yeah, that's another project that's gonna be complete here not too, not too long. So, and then the old generator naturally will be, we'll put that on gov deals. So, hoping to get a pretty good price out of that. It still works, it's just an aged generator. And this is a natural gas. We converted from diesel to natural gas. The park is coming along great. We put, that is the last item right there. It's a playset. There's another picture, I think, at the end, what it's gonna look like. But we put that in concrete today, so there'll be a couple, and this is for the smaller kids, you know. There'll be a couple of slides off of that, like a little mini climbing wall off of that. And there's a little interactive gear toy that'll be attached to it. And I think also a little drum also on it. So, that should be up and running. My guess, we poured concrete today. We'll get all the toys on it probably by week's end. So probably early next week, we'll take the caution tape down, and the edging will be up, mulch will be in. And like I said, that is the last toy from the nature work there.
And I have noticed an increased usage in the park. The wife and I were coming back from Columbus the other afternoon, and it was, it was packed. Kids everywhere. They're trying out the new equipment, so it's much appreciated.
There's the new swing sets. It's been installed. There's the new merry-go-round, the all-inclusive spinner. The, that has a crack in it. I've noted, I contacted the company. So she's contacting Little Tikes to see if we can get a replacement on that, so. But I, it's not, the crack's not affecting anything, but we are taking care of that. There's a bouncy spring toy. Another one. Little bulldozer. And there's the infamous hoopla, what they call it. And that was a real chore, a chore to put together, I tell you. But we fought with that, but we finally, finally got it. So it's, that replaced the concrete culvert pipe that was there, you know, in the sand. So, it's not just a climbing toy. It doesn't move. And your kids, I've seen them climb through it and on it and under it and all that stuff. So, there's the tire swing. And then here's what the playset's gonna look like, right there, so.
Nice.
Yeah. So.
Very nice.
And that was all through a nature works grant that you'd applied for last year?
Yes.
What was the total amount on that?
A $47,000 grant, $43,000?
That was the total project cost.
Total project cost, yeah.
The grant was for $35 and a half.
Thirty-five, something like that, yeah.
So, we had a little bit money-wise invested, but that grant paid for the majority?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paid for 75% of it. We do 20, it's 75, 25%.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Thank you for your guys and labor.
They did a heck of a job.
Putting it together.
Yeah, they did, did a heck of a job, so I'm pretty proud of it, so. Come to find out, we'd already passed an OPWC ordinance, so you can cross that off your list. I'll be applying, submitting that application for the Green Vista sewer, storm sewer project. So that projects, or that application's not due until October. They moved it back a couple months, so. But I will be applying for that, getting on the portal and applying for that, so. Thursday, August 28, 12:30 to 6:30 is another blood donation time. There are 47 appointment slots. Thirty-four have been made, so there are still a few appointments available if anybody's interested in donating blood. It's at donortime.org. You can schedule your own appointment. This has always been a great turnout for the village of Enen for donating blood, so. That's at Thursday, August 28, 12:30 to 6:30 here at the government center. Reminder, office will be closed September 1st for the Labor Day. And I, council, we discussed the use of Settlers Park here a few meetings back for some vendors to come in. And I guess it was kind of up in the, up in the air about, you know, if there was gonna be certain days, certain however many days per month, or. I know the gentleman that was here at the meeting has called and requested to, you know, get more information or whatever. He did actually fill out a land use agreement. His insurance is all in order and stuff like that, but he, we were just kind of waiting on to see if there was any thoughts of certain days of the month, or how many times a month that somebody could come in and set up and sell items. So, I don't know if you want to discuss that, or now, or later date, or whatever, but that's, that's still kind of up in the air.
What was the request on his land use agreement?
He sell, his wife sells homemade jewelry, and he sells leather goods.
So did he have specific dates that he was asking for, or just a general?
Just general.
Okay.
He was just kind of waiting on us, just to, because I know that was brought up, that, you know, it was gonna be discussed to see if it was gonna be once a month, twice a month, you know, certain weekends, you know.
If I recall, I think he was open to whatever, anytime.
Maybe we might want to look toward going to social media and seeing if we could get multiple people to come in at one particular, two days a week or something like that, to see if we could draw more than one individual down there, maybe some food trucks or something else, to start getting some interest.
Sure.
As a thought, just.
Or maybe on a Saturday or something. I would think you'd probably get more foot traffic on a weekend.
Right. If you bring a food truck, you're gonna get people.
Yes.
As long as it's not apple butter weekend.
You get a lot of more people. They'll go from one to the other.
Competition.
I know there's a lot of vendors in the local area that would be very interested in doing it. I don't know what the frequency we need to set it at, but I think having at least one or two days a month that, you know, are set, I think we would get quite a few vendors.
Or Saturday of the month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like a lot of communities do, there are farmers' markets, which we do, used to do. I think it needs to be something that's set, and everybody can, you know, put it in their calendar. Okay, we know the first and third Saturday of the month, or whatever we want to call it. I just, I think we would get a lot more traffic and vendors interested in doing it. If we set dates.
I like Rick's idea of seeing who might be interested in, would we have two or three? Would we have half a dozen?
Why don't we put it out there and see what, see what kind of interest?
We're shooting for, as we say, a particular date at this point to say this is what we're planning on doing, who else would like to be there, so we could plan accordingly, but.
I think if we went for the first and third Saturdays, just starting off, just to see where.
Yeah. That's what I think.
Let's do something, just get it out there.
As long as the police department doesn't have something scheduled for the community that, that any of those weekends, or at least if we had a set weekend, you'd know what to work around.
Well, we could say first and third Saturday unless otherwise noted. You know, we could always note it. But again, we could also post that on social media and say, you know, we're looking at first and third Saturday, you know.
Who would be interested?
Who would be interested?
Maybe give us, give us some other ideas, dates, or times like that, too. Plus, I mean, we can always change it from first or third Saturday.
Sure.
Depending on how it goes, so.
Would it be completely open? Would it have to be a resident of the area? What would be a restriction? Because obviously, capacity gets too large. You only have a set amount of space. Those are things probably to consider before you put it out there as well.
I mean, that would be my only concern with the food trucks.
Yeah.
Because there's where you're gonna park, and where's the line for the food truck gonna go, so.
And I think we'd have to find out, just to see how many people are interested first and go from there.
Yeah, I agree.
Settlers Park is only so big. You're right, you can't put a lot there. Good point, Christian.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I did contact Par Striping today. He's given us an estimate on the crosswalks, stop bars, the double line down North Harrison there. Any of the secondary stuff that did not get painted. The county is coming in to paint the arrows. They're kind of organizing, their contractor right now, to come in and paint the arrows. We were under contract with them just for the arrows, so. So he, so soon as I hear from Par, I will let you all know. I'm hoping to hear from him yet this week. So as soon as I hear from him, I'll shoot you off an email and let everybody know, so. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. Questions for our administrator?
You're getting pretty high-tech with the slides up here.
I know.
Getting good?
I know.
Thanks, Kevin. Good report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief Wise.
Chief.
Has a nice ring to it.
Counsel, thank you. Start off with the, all the officers are in, the training today, tomorrow, and Thursday for the continuing education that we have to have for the year. It'll all be covered under the, in those three days. We started that today. Long day. Talking about legal updates and stuff, but by the time we get the three days down, we'll have all the training that is mandated by the state. I got another phone call from Bo Townsend.
Oh, boy.
They're thinking this might be covered under warranty, but they got another $1,500 bill, because they gotta tear the head apart to find out what the problem is, so.
Chief, you might want to talk into your microphone with it.
So, they gave us a $1,500 bill for tearing the head apart of the motor to try to figure out what the problem is. They think it's probably going to be covered under warranty, which in that case, everything would be covered. But if not, we're gonna be on the hook for that, for that amount.
How much would we put in that, so, over the past six weeks, or two months, or?
I've written down the last bill was $2,400.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, probably close to $5,000.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be according to mine.
Yeah.
Close to five.
I talked to Mr. Seaford about the Par Striping, putting a thin blue line in front of the police department and a thin red line in front of the fire department to show support for the public safety of the, of the village and the township.
That will be, and he's gonna quote that, too.
All right. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Good. Questions for our chief?
You haven't heard anything else on the flock cameras either, right?
So, we actually have to make the decision on whether we're going to be able to keep them.
Yeah.
We ran a list of what our cameras have done over the past month. Today, we, the county was able to track down a suicidal person hitting off the flock camera, going back to their house. We've had several warrant arrests off of them. Over the past month, we've had 19 hits on stolen plates, 12 hits on violent persons, six stolen vehicles, one protection order, one sex offender, and then, of course, the warrant hits that we, that they've, they've picked up.
And the problem that we're facing right now is because the grant was not approved, that we were hoping for, this would be an expense that would have to come from the village. The uncertainty of the levy that will be on the ballot this fall, in my opinion, makes it a decision that we're gonna have to put this on hold. Those monies, that $15,000, my opinion, needs to be spent for direct operations of our police department. People in the cars, equipment, the other operations, we just, in my opinion, we can't afford to do it right now. And I'm sorry to say that, because I, these do have a use. A resident reached out to me, and I explained to them kind of how the process worked, or whatever, and they were understanding of that, but the uncertainty of that levy, I think, makes this decision, at least for me, an easy one. We're just gonna have to put it on hold for the time being.
I agree. Now, just as, from what I understood, they would now, if we do put this on hold, they would come and remove those cameras, and if we ever were to do it in the future, it would be the reinstallation, the cost upfront again, as well as all of that, okay?
Correct. Which they gave, they didn't charge us any installation fees for putting the cameras up, but they would, so.
But, I agree. I, I mean, I don't think at this point in time, we would want to, need to use those funds for that. I agree.
Is that the consensus of the council? I'm sorry?
Do we need a motion on that?
That would be great.
I'll move that we do not extend our contract with flock cameras.
Flock cameras.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Unfortunately, yes.
Ms. Leece.
Unfortunately, yes, also.
Mrs. Sweet.
Same, unfortunately, yes.
Jeff, thank you for your help on that.
Anything else?
Have we had any of the activity that the townships had within the village itself, that the vehicle break-ins and the other stuff?
We have not. The townships had two or three reports, Brandon? Yes, please.
Thanks, Brandon.
Who is this guy?
Good evening, everyone. I'm used to being across the street. Forcing one's gonna have a nice ring to it, Jeff. Congratulations on your appointment to chief of police. So, over the, what would have been Sunday night into Monday, we had a report, a couple of reports in the area of Green Meadows of a couple of young juvenile individuals that were attempting to gain access into motor vehicles. One being on New Horizon, the other one being on Marion, and then there was one down in Holiday Valley on Philadelphia. Around that same time period, an entered stolen vehicle out of Montgomery County made its way into the county. Deafies attempted to stop it. It fled, crashed in German Township, and unfortunately, they were not able to take those subjects into custody. However, through what appears to be some further investigation by members of the investigation bureau, all these subjects are young juveniles out of the area of Dayton, and they're continuing their investigation to further identify them and hopefully file warrants on them for set offenses. We do believe that they are absolutely connected. Unfortunately, this is a pattern that it's not only the township has dealt with, or the village, or the county, or the city. This is extremely widespread. I do understand where your guys' position is on the cameras at this time, which I do understand. They are a great help, absolutely a fantastic help, so hopefully the levy will pass, and hopefully we can get those back, because they are a giant help, not just to the county, not just to the village of Enen, but for any agency that access is shared with, so.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Agreed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My problem, guys.
Anything else? Okay, do we have any committed reports this evening?
Yes, we do. We.
Mr. Hannah.
The public safety committee had two special meetings on, the first one Wednesday, July 30, and the second one on Thursday, July 31. The sole purpose of that was to interview police chief candidates and the public safety committee, which would be Ms. Sweet and Mr. DeVoli and myself. If you'd look over the minutes from Wednesday, July 30, I'd entertain, accept a motion to accept those.
I will make the motion to accept said meetings minutes.
I'll second.
All of us in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Same thing for July 31. I entertain a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay, and I'll second that one.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Any opposed? Both of them passed, thank you. Okay. Any opposed? Both of them passed. Thank you very much.
Great teamwork.
Okay, we have no... I'd also like to put on the record, we greatly appreciate the efforts of Chief Doyle Wright in this. He was a great help in that, on both guidance and direct questions that needed a direct answer, so he was very appreciated in the whole process.
No old business, no new business. We do have an executive session scheduled for this evening. Are there any comments from the public tonight?
I know you're so sorry that I'm reporting this now, but when you're talking about the flock cameras, have we presented with them that the levy's coming up and it's the taxes that we deal with them? Do they know that? Maybe they'll extend our period. It's gonna be easier for them to leave these cameras up if they think there's a real chance of getting...
So they were made aware of that in our initial meeting?
Okay.
Yes, good question.
Do you think you maybe want to make it one more time?
I'll talk to, when I call them, and just explain to them what's going on, and maybe...
Chief would love to do that.
I'll find a lot more segments to do.
Buy them one, give them a free one.
They'll change their mind, and they're down to the grindstone. They know you guys want to use them, but there is time. It's not like you just don't like them and get rid of them.
Right.
Right.
And it would end up being more frankly feasible to keep them later if we can...
I agree.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, I'd entertain a motion and a second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment and compensation of village employees.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli?
Yes.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Six thirty-two.
And I do expect some action when we return to regular session. I turn it down. There's all those bodies in there. It's like...
The door is freezing in here.
Okay, we need a motion to enter into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Seven oh five two.
Mr. DeVoli?
Here.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Here.
Mrs. Sweet?
Here.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Thanks, Whitaker.
And Kevin, I'm gonna turn it over to you for an announcement?
Public...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you first, and we'll do...
I want to let everybody know that I've made a decision to leave the Village of Enon. My last day in my office will be October the 6th. Circumstances have come where I got the opportunity for another job back up where our kids are at and grandkids, and where we intend to retire. We've always said sooner or later, we're gonna end up back up there, but it happened sooner. This opportunity came, and so, yeah, I really enjoyed working with council and the employees, and enjoyed you residents. And this is my second home. This is my second home, so I appreciate all the kind words over the past six and a half years. It went fast, so, but I pray that, you know, another person can step right in and take the reins and serve the village well. So thank you very much.
And we appreciate the work that you did. You had tough shoes to fill, and you filled them very well.
Thank you.
So wish you the best of luck.
I'll be available, too, like you said.
Yes. We know where you're at.
Shoot me a text. Shoot me a text. I'll give you phone numbers, whatever.
It won't be hard to find you.
And Mr. Hannah, let's take care of that motion, if we could, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve what the mayor had discussed in council about wages and benefits for the employees.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli?
Yes.
And that motion passes, and before we adjourn, ma'am, would you like to address council? Name an address, please.
Carolyn Pyttell, 151 Royal Lane.
Okay.
I've been a resident of Enon for thirty years. I wanted to talk about the feral cat problem on Royal Lane. My neighbor has been feeding and sheltering cats for over five years. She's had at least ten cats at one time in her yard. I've had two litters of kittens born in my backyard in the past two years, and we don't need more cats in the neighborhood. I've done everything I can. I've done my part. I've contacted animal control, TNR programs, shelters, even the village. I think I talked to you one time, Kevin, about the situation, but I haven't received help from anyone. I just had a chance to talk to these two ladies about, you know, getting help and possibly finding a solution, but as of right now, it's absolutely disgusting. And I feel sorry for the cats. You know, that's who I feel sorry for. You know, they suffer. They're outside all winter in all types of conditions. They spread diseases, and I have a five-month-old puppy right now that's wandering in my yard trying to eat cat poop. And, you know, they're coming into my yard. They go up on my roof, and all my neighbor has to say is, they're not my cats, but she chooses to continue to feed them. Food left out for cats can also lure unwanted wildlife, you know, raccoons, skunks, rats, and everything, and it also creates a very unhealthy environment in our community. And my husband's going to speak in a few minutes about an incident that happened the other day that's unbelievable. It's a nuisance issue, and I feel if she chooses to feed the cats, she should be responsible enough to get them fixed, but her response is, they're not my cats. And we don't speak to each other. We've had a lot of issues over the years, and it's just, we cannot communicate. There's a lot of issues with her.
Okay.
Another thing, another point, unneutered male cats spread diseases and fight more. I hear cat fights over there at night, you know, over in her yard. Her yard is overgrown. I mean, who knows what other animals are living over in there? Can you consider adopting an ordinance? There is an ordinance, 618.13, which is an animal nuisance ordinance, because there's unsanitary conditions with these cats. Going to the bathroom in my yard, I picked up four piles of poop today from her cats, coming over, going in the garden, you know, going here and going everywhere. A TNR program that could be, you know, initiated. Also, a feeding ordinance. You know, why is she, who would want to feed all these cats? I mean, why? Something needs to be done, but it just seems like nobody cares. And I think that we need a community effort to help solve the problem. And if you don't realize how bad it is, you don't realize how bad it is until you live next door to somebody who feeds all these cats, because I'm getting to the point where I'm ready to move. But nothing, nothing can be done, and, you know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh, thank you.
We have heard your comments. I know the Public Service Committee has been working on this issue.
Legislative.
Legislative, sorry. Thank you. It is my hope that neighbors can work together through resources, and I understand what you said. I get it. That is my hope. However, in addition to what my wishes are, that committee is looking at legislation, so.
Something needs to be done.
We've been working on legislation for about two months now with different groups, and we're waiting on an audit from another company about all of our ordinances before we put anything out yet. So this is a process that we've been dealing with for about two months now.
Thank you. And everyone on my street feels the same way. I could have them all up here in two weeks, and they'd all have the same thing to say.
Trust me, we've heard the complaints, and we're listening. We're doing what we can, but we still have to do it in a proper legal fashion.
And I realize that, but I'd appreciate it if something could be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My husband.
Hello. Chuck Pyttell. Lived there almost thirty years, and I really liked living in Enon. Nice village. Just wanted to relay my experience Sunday. I noticed an odor coming from around my car, so after I got home from church, I lifted up the hood, and there was a dead cat at the bottom, on top of the engine guard. So if you put yourself in my position, I had to have the car jacked up, and I had to slide under the car, undo six bolts, and then pull the guard down and reach in and pull the cat out, which already had flies and maggots, so it was not a very pleasant experience at all. And it's only August, so who knows how many more cats are gonna be climbing into the vehicle when it gets colder, because you don't expect that in August. Just so that you know that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We hear the concerns, and there's always two sides. We understand there's an issue, and again, it's my hope that through resources that the village can provide, and maybe we haven't found the right resources yet, that we can broker solutions to the problems that are out there. That's what I hope. In the meantime, we're still working on legislation. So we hear what you're saying. We get it. We just need to do the right thing for the entire village, okay? Thank you for your comments.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Seven forty.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it.